Two thousand twenty-five meeting to order. At this time, we're gonna ask Ms. Steele if she'll please call to roll.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Ork?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco is absent, Mr. Bizani is absent, and Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we'll ask, uh, Mr. Gibson if he'll, uh, invocation in our, listen to our pleasure of agents.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings upon our great nation as we begin a new year and a new administration. Bless and protect our president, vice president, members of Congress, all their families, as they strive to work together to serve our country. Equip our Board of Supervisors with wisdom and good judgment to best serve Gloucester County and its citizens as we deliberate and make important decisions in the coming year. Watch over and protect all of our dedicated men and women serving in our armed forces, serving as first responders, as law enforcement, as firefighters and paramedics, and bless and protect our schools, teachers, staff, and students. We all, we pray all of these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll have approval of our minutes from November the sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Move to second and question. All in favor?
Aye.
This time, we'll have the adoption of our agenda.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, I'd like to, um, change the consent agenda. Item C, I'd like to remove that from the agenda for tonight.
Okay. So, do we give the motion with the second?
Second.
Any discussion? So, we have the adoption of the agenda with the exclusion of, uh, C?
Yes.
Second.
Second. No question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll have matters presented by the board.
Approval of consent agenda.
Approval of, approval of consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, matters presented by the board. Okay, county administrators items.
I will be, I will be heading up for the VACO legislative day, and so if anybody has any last minute items that they want me to mention while I'm there, um, please let me know. I did get, um, a list from our registrar of several, uh, issues that are affecting that organization that are also in line with some of the, um, legislation that's been proposed. And I believe, um, Ms. Cronin has reached out to you all about the two-on-two dates, and just wanna remind you to respond on that. Uh, look forward to, as we're getting into that budget season, to meeting with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Public comment. Period. Anyone? Ms. Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had two comments submitted, first from Kenneth Hogg, Senior, Gloucester Point. This evening, you will be presented with the administration's proposed capital improvement plan. Then, in a few days, you will have a retreat where you and the administration will talk about a number of topics, including our utilities department. You all know what I am talking about because it is the same process every year. Every year, the same thing happens. Utilities is left without the financial and other support necessary for it to develop into a self-sustaining enterprise. Utilities needs upwards of a hundred million dollars for capital water and sewer system projects, and it is that time of the year again when you, the board, will either kick the can down the road again or do something substantially better by financially investing in our water and sewer systems. If you look, I believe you will find an immediate need for twenty million in capital funding. When I say immediate, I mean projects that should be completed in five years or less. In two thousand eleven, the Board of Supervisors recognized the financial struggles of our utilities department and invested in conducting a financial assessment of the department, of the department. Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc. was hired to perform the assessment. I highly encourage the board to take a few minutes to read the Raftellus report while keeping in mind that the board has not financially invested in utilities for several years, which is completely contrary to the recommendations of the report and plain old common sense. There are a couple of other documents each of you should read in order to gain a better understanding of the condition of utilities. They are the two thousand six and two thousand nineteen water and sewer master plans. Combine the three documents demonstrate a history of neglect and mismanagement of our only enterprise department by each one of you and many of your predecessors. Your continued lack of understanding of the health, safety, and financial liabilities associated with providing public water and sewer services is nothing short of appalling. I again strongly suggest this board follow James City County's example by becoming the new Utilities Advisory Committee, along with seeking professional help to set you on the right path forward. If you were not willing to do that, then at least attempt to begin negotiations with Newport News Water Works to have them take over our water system. Either way you go, it is going to cost a lot of money due to the prolonged neglect and mismanagement. Instead of discussing utilities at your retreat, I suggest you hold your discussion during your recorded work session meeting so everyone can watch and listen. I believe that is called transparency. Thank you. From Howard Mallory York District, this time of the year is always famous for the Board of Supervisors and the administration to consider how much the citizen's net income can be extracted for the operation of the local government. In some cases, it involves raising taxes, if only to support the increase in salaries and benefits, and those in the private sector get nothing. So here we are tonight, being shown a presentation of capital improvements for the next number of years for an unknown sum until disclosed by administration. The irony of this presentation, the only known viewing citizens are those with TV or a computer. Many in today's conditions cannot afford either, thus they are at a loss as to what the government is planning for their future and at what cost. Why this annual process cannot be accomplished one time in open public is unknown, with changes being accomplished as presented. Having not seen this plan, I can well guess that Parks and Recreation will have more spots than any other department in the process. The most critical segment will be the Utilities Department, which may have the least in this planning document. Whether the citizens have kept up with this enterprise fund on a yearly basis is unknown, but our condition is possibly as bad as Southern California. If substantial funding for utilities is not a part of this plan, then the citizens soon may be faced with a very substantial tax increase to modernize a business enterprise that has been financially neglected for decades. The Board of Supervisors are the CEOs of the county. If planning is limited to wages and benefits, which is the largest segment of the budget, then every other process goes lacking. For years, I have asked for a time and motion study, but this has been sent to the wayside. This survey will instantly determine where costs can be saved and those funds diverted to our urgent deficiencies. Thank you for the time. Those are all the comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cronin. Uh, at this time, we will move on to our work session agenda. Uh, Ms. Spring? Request for appropriations for Joint BOS and EDA Small Business Incentive Grant Program.
Thank you, and good evening, Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. The Economic Development Authority, which we call the EDA, is requesting appropriation for the Joint Board of Supervisors and EDA Small Business Incentive Grant Program. In your board packet is a letter from the EDA Chairman and a description of this program. The Gloucester County Economic Development Authority announced this new program in July the first of two thousand sixteen, and the response has been overwhelming by new business and also expanded businesses. To date, in FY twenty-five, we have awarded twenty-seven grants in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars with a private investment of two point two million. The beginning balance, starting on July first of two thousand twenty-four, was sixty-six thousand six hundred dollars, and right now, the uncommitted balance as of January the tenth is nine thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. So the EDA respectfully requests an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars with a thirty thousand dollar gra, uh, match from the EDA Board.
Okay, do we have any questions for Ms. Spring? Okay, we have a resolution on page sixty-two of our agenda. Yep, you got a question?
Ms. Steele, in terms of the money that comes from your general fund budget, or has this been allocated in our?
Unassigned.
On assigned?
Unassigned fund balance.
Yeah. Actually, Ms. Spring, just a question for you. I'm, I'm reading all the documents, and again, part, being part of the EDA, it actually just occurred to me because there was a interesting story in the paper about Main Street Association giving grants to a number of people. Do you try to link up sometimes with Main Street to see if there are ways to enhance the types of grants they give that would make it even more profitable?
Yes, well, actually, with Main Street, they're a little unique, where, uh, Main Street can give a grant, and the EDA and the Board of Supervisors can, can match that grant in partnership. We've got a, uh, a project that we just did recently where the Main Street Group, um, committed five thousand dollars, and the EDA Board committed five thousand dollars. So no, we are in partnership with them to try to leverage more dollars for these projects.
Any more questions? The board members? Okay. We have a resolution on page sixty-two of your agenda packet.
Second.
Move to second, any, any further discussion? Further discussion? Ms. Steele?
Dr. Ork?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you all so much, we appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to our regular agenda, presentation of our FY twenty-six through FY thirty capital improvement plan and request for a public hearing. Uh, Ms. Carol Steele.
You work so hard for a long time to do something like this, so then when you happen to get a cold and have to do your presentation, it's a little disappointing, but at least I think I'm far enough away, and ta-da, I'll keep my germs close to me. At least it's just a cold. So, um, I am happy tonight, uh, to bring to you the recommended capital improvement plan for the next five years, and, um, this document has a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in it from many different people, so I'd like to acknowledge, uh, the support from finance, in particular, Maria, and also Mary Terry, uh, all the department heads who submitted their needs and support, uh, information, the schools, and also this year Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue for their submissions as well. The topics of discussion, uh, we've added a, a few additional ones and sort of switched around things because I, I wanted to make sure that the board had a broader picture of where we are financially, and I've also highlighted new projects so that you would specifically, um, notice those. Um, the board is aware of this, but the public is not, um, till right now, that we are not gonna be discussing the utilities budget as we normally do, um, in the capital improvement, uh, presentation. And the reason for that is that we wanted to have the feedback from the board to look at, um, the long-term needs and the five-year needs, and also have a little bit more time, um, hopefully to get some more guidance and information from, uh, the state. So, that, the, um, utilities budget will be handled together in March as both the, um, operating and the capital, and as an enterprise system, that sort of makes sense too, and it makes the presentation a little bit shorter, which isn't a bad thing either. Our objectives have not changed, uh, they're part of the standard local government, uh, ways of what we're trying to do with a capital improvement budget. Um, I am encouraging that tonight and, uh, in the next few weeks, that there be an active discussion from the board, providing us feedback and, you know, to talk to your constituency and to let us know the items that you believe should be included and what may need to be removed. I suggested this before, that, um, when we have such a long list of needs, there's no way that these things are gonna get done in five years, and it would be good to have, uh, feedback from the board of what your goals and vision are, um, if there's something that you feel like is not financially appropriate for now, or even something that you don't think local government should be a part of. Let's get them off the list and inform people and, and concentrate on what we do think, um, needs to be done. The CIP process is the same, um, we do have the slight modifications that we make to the forms each year as we're, uh, evaluating how to improve them for staff and, and their The project scoring and prioritization is also the same, so this, uh, the department heads score their projects, it goes to the Planning Commission, they score, and then the Budget Team scores. And I do not have a separate county administrator score, but you will see some, um, later on as far as the recommendations and, and how they align with, um, and sometimes not with the average scores. The interest inflation, we, um, use the four percent, and, um, that, the department head is, they're supposed to put in a contingency for things that are like change orders and things that can happen that make a, a project more expensive than you thought it might be, and the four percent is for us looking at with the inflation rate as the dollar value changes over time, and we don't wanna underestimate the cost, especially when you're looking at, um, delaying some of the projects or not addressing them for years from now. And, and talking with Davenport, they agreed to that we should just keep the interest rate at the proposed five percent projected for our calculations. Um, I wanted to also mention that this year, we did something a little bit different in FY twenty-five, that the projects that you approved with that contingency, we pulled the contingency down into one lump line item. We didn't want anybody to think they had more money than they had, we hope we don't have to spend it, but it's the kind of thing that you might have some projects that come under and some that go over. The fact that we did include that was a good thing because the building for a project did go over budget, and we didn't have to come back to the board and ask for thirty thousand dollars and, and slow the process down and, and things like that. So it's good that we're, we're doing this and having that together so it can support the projects that need it and not cause any, uh, overspending. The funding options that are listed are the same ones that, again, that everybody's looking for, how do they get their capital funds, and whether it's through taxes and, and whether it's through grants, through donations, et cetera, and, um, you know, that's, we're looking at every avenue that we can, um, to get the funds that we need for this. And we divide things, as you all know, into financed and Pago. At the previous meeting, Ms. Callaway showed you what our fund balance is going into this year's projections for our capital improvement plan. With a sixteen percent re, reserve, that leaves three point two million dollars. My, um, budget, as you'll see, is proposed on three million dollars of Pago projects. I am concerned that we do not have, uh, reserve funds that other localities do, and that we are basing our capital improvement plan on year-to-year. What do we have? We are not looking at a five-year plan that this should be done year one, this should be done year two, this is three, four, and five, and those funds are set aside and budgeted for, and we can move ahead and make plans for them, and the community knows that they're coming, and they know what year, and, um, staff don't have to be, you know, left in the dark on things. And, and instead, in trying to keep, to be honest, just the tax rate down, we look to only the fund balance. If we don't have a good fund balance, we don't fund capital. If we have a really good fund balance, we can. That is, in, um, my opinion, not the way that we should continue, and I really do hope that when the final budget is adopted, that it will include a five-year capital improvement plan that's adopted with the understanding, yes, you can have things that happen that make you have to change your budget, just like you can with your operating budget during the middle of the year, if there's some sort of a crisis or something, but it would be the normal way that budgets are handled and the, um, the, I would say, the most professional way, and, and running, uh, the county in, in an efficient and, uh, way that it should be done. Other localities use things like a revenue stabilization fund, where they know that revenues might be down at some time, so they have this fund that's sitting over here, so in case taxes aren't there, in case there is a problem, they have this revenue stabilization fund. We don't have anything like that. Others have a capital reserve fund, so maybe, again, when you do, you budget five million dollars and you put all your bids out and it comes in at five point five. Instead of having to stop, go back, and try to postpone projects, they can go to that capital reserve fund and, and help out with those differences. And then others also have a debt service reserve fund. If you are planning on your debt payments being paid by certain amounts each year, and again, the taxes or other things that are funding that debt service are lower than expected, there is that reserve. I know, I, I've heard for many years from the public about the concern about taking tax dollars that aren't really needed. What I think that the public needs to understand is that we are so lean that when things happen, like trying to come up with thirty thousand dollars for a match, we have to scramble because I didn't wanna cut somebody's existing budget so that the EDA could have thirty thousand dollars extra. That's how lean our budget is without the fun, that the only thing we have is that unassigned fund balance, and we're in good shape there. Again, we've got more than three million dollars in there. Um, and I realize what I'm saying, um, would require some sort of a commitment of funds to get there. If we were to budget for those capital projects each year in advance, then that's a commitment that we're going to need those funds and, and, um, again, get them, so, sorry. I said, as I'm not feeling that well, my words don't come together as well as I like them to. Um, on the, uh, this page here is the summary, and this is the sticker shock, right? So there are thirty-three total requests, and that's from both Pago and debt financing, for a total of a hundred and forty-six million dollars. That is quite a bit higher than last year's five-year total. And the reason for that is, uh, one big ticket item is there's an addition of a community center that's a forty-eight million dollar price tag in here. Um, there are other, uh, new items that, again, we'll go over. When we look at the net cost after grants and things, the net cost that would come out of our tax funds and other sources locally would be the hundred and thirty-one million dollars, and that's divided up, as you can see, the bulk of them being debt financed and the others Pago. And I, also, um, we do not have a written in stone, what's Pago, what's debt financed. Similar to our personal budgets, we might owe a little bit here, 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 and there, and you pool them all together and do one financing. So we can always do that with Pago projects if the board desires, so something that might be Pago gets lumped together to become debt financed. But in general, you would hope that we would have enough funds that we could fund something that's two million dollars rather than have to pay interest on it. And that's, again, not where we are right now. The new projects, four out of the five years have a new project, you would always expect the year five to be new because you haven't seen it before, but I wanted to just, uh, again, highlight some of these, and they make up over, um, eighty million dollars and, of that, uh, large request. So first of all is, um, Station One, and then we have the replacement of our financial software, and I'm gonna, it's more than financial, but I will, uh, have a couple slides directly on that. Beaver Dam Park, Bulkhead and Dock, uh, the school's casework, and that is for Petsworth, and I believe Abington or Achilles, it's just two schools. Um, Building Two Window Replacement, uh, Building Two has single-pane windows throughout, it's the only, uh, building on the campus with single-pane windows. The IT network overhaul and replacement, all of those things were put down as an immediate, we need to fund this next year. In the FY twenty-eight is the funding of Gloucester Point Library and to get out of the rental business and go into, uh, having a facility, and this is something that was discussed at the retreat last year with the board, about, uh, an opportunity to purchase land and, over time, uh, build up a, a library, and so the FY twenty-eight is the, um, construction timeframe. FY twenty-six didn't have a specific cost, but the, the land purchase could be at any point. Uh, FY, and also the Tendles Point Park to Gloucester Point Beach Connector, something we've talked about for years, and that's a grant fund project. FY twenty-nine, the carpet replacement throughout county buildings and the courts, and then, um, Gloucester High School and to Gloucester Matthews Humane Society, what we're calling the Old Landfill Trail, and again, that would be hopefully grant-funded to connect that, and that would eventually get everybody from the high school to Main Street, then connect on to pedestrian ways along Main. And then finally, in FY thirty, the community center and the animal shelter, um, addition. The total that you'll see in just a minute, under the long page, it's kinda hard to read because it has so many different projects on it, shows you, I, the, what these totals would be for year, per year, under the Pago. I was trying to get us up to three million, you could see that, that's a third, less than a third for year three of what the anticipated needs are. Adding in what would be financed, which is the, um, debt payment on the top of this, added to the Pagos that you just saw on the previous slide, you can see the total amount that would be needed each year, and this excludes the community center and the middle school bathrooms. I felt like, as a recommendation, there was no way that either could be funded in the next five years, so I went ahead and took that fifty-seven million dollars, um, off in recommendations. Um, but just so you know, if you were saying, well, let's do that year six, just for those two projects, it would be four point eight million. This is, um, a chart that shows you, if we do commit three million dollars a year, which we have not done, um, it would take eleven years to fund the five years that we have of request right now under Pago, and then we would be accumulating six more years' worth of projects that would happen. I'm not trying to depress the board or anybody watching, um, but I want everybody to understand just how far behind we are, and then again, I recognize that many of these projects, when you're getting down to the evaluation, you may say, well, that's no problem because that's coming off the list, and that's coming off the list, and that amount will go smaller and smaller. These are the, if, the recommendations for our department heads of what would be funded. The negative impacts of delaying projects has been discussed in previous years, and we're really seeing it, um, for real. So inflationary expenses can outpace the ability to generate new revenue. We can push things off thinking, we don't have the money right now, but the cost to do that project continues to grow, where our revenue source may not grow as fast. I went back, and I, I don't know the first year that it was asked for, but I could find in my own files, in two thousand and two, I requested over thirty thousand dollars, I believe it was thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, for the paving of the Beaver Dam parking lot that just occurred in this, in, in twenty-four, in twenty twenty-four. It was basically ten times the amount that we originally budgeted because we put it off year after year after year. A second delay, our second problem with delaying is that the cost can increase because by delaying to fix something, more damage gets done. An example like that is our roof repair. We started a new program to identify the roofs. We had a, a person come in last year and evaluate all of our roofs because we don't want to have any additional damage. If we push those things off, then we could be having other structural damage that would make the price go up. And then the third thing is the citizens not having the available services and facilities that they are asking for and wanting. An example is our park playgrounds. In twenty twenty-one, we had to remove the playground at Gloucester Point Beach because it was ruined, it was, it had done its time, it was, it was toast. We have never replaced it. We have two more playgrounds that are in this five-year plan that have to be replaced or we lose them. So we, the first year, and I don't have it recommended, in that three million dollar spending, is the, uh, playground at Beaver Dam, which was, uh, originally funded for pennies for the playground, it's a little different times now than doing pennies. Um, and also the playground at our- And also the playground at Ark during that five-year period. If we don't fund playground replacement, those facilities are just going to be gone because we have to have it remain safe. So how do we get through some of these shortfalls? If we don't have enough money, what is it we can do? Well, first of all, we just mentioned we can postpone projects. I mentioned earlier, denying projects, saying they're not to be on the list. Let's just, you know, we'll look at this five years from now, but it's just not going to happen. Another solution is to use the school's sales tax reserve, which we have about $2 million more than what we had anticipated collecting up to this point. Those funds are restricted to be used for school projects. We have school projects on this list, so we could go ahead and use those funds. That could be either for a Pago project or for using it as a debt service. And you'll see, I'll talk more about that in the proposal. And then raising taxes. So to, to generate more revenue for a Pago project, we don't know the value of a penny yet, but looking at somewhere in that $560,000 range, if we had that much, as you look down the list of all the Pago requests, it would fund it one or two. The other is if you take the tax increase and you apply it to what it could do for debt, if you're going to be spending that over 20 years or 30 years. This is a page that you all like to look at to kind of see, where are we hoping? Because we're all wanting to see debt retired so that we have new availability of funds. The top three figures have all been included in the recommended budget. So they're already accounted for in the recommendations to get there. So the next time that we would have new money would be 32 and then 34. If the board would like us to do any more deliberation to see, okay, what, what would that look like if we do 32 and 34? What could we fund then? We are more than happy to do that. We've got the ability to work with Davenport, and beyond that, Maria's got the calculations set up in the computer as well. So if that is something that the board sees as a possible solution of really looking at a 10-year plan versus a five-year plan because of those two additional, then let us know, and we'll be glad to figure that out. So here is again, the list of the, the Pago requests. This is all of them for the five years, and the ones that are in green are the ones that have an external funding source. Things like the history building preservation that has a reserve account. And the others, there are some grants from, anticipated grants from the Department of Conservation Recreation, and also the generator and the air conditioning being part of Department of Homeland Security grant. And those figures again, the five, six, the six and the nine, all are the same that you've already seen. These are all the debt requests that were submitted. And again, I mentioned the library construction, that's really starting with the purchase of the land, and we don't have an amount, but that was something to, to look at at some point. The $2 million, we're going to talk more about with the software. And the sports complex has been a very active conversation. Unfortunately, it's not in the recommended budget. And then 17 million for, plus for Station One. So then if we look at what are, just the Pago for '26, instead of looking at the five-year plan, let's look at what's next year, and what is it total out, and what are the projects? So you don't have to look at the big, long chart, and then you can see again, the funds that come in from outside sources and what would be needed. These are the project scores, and they are in the highest to the lowest with number, number one being the fire station, and then working all the way down to the library construction. We did not provide that to the Planning Commission in time to have them evaluate it, so it has an NA because it didn't have a score. And I've noted on the yellow on the right, which ones were debt financed. So by far, the bulk are Pago. These are the recommended, and it looks like I've got a lineup problem on that, Pago recommendations, which projects. First is the E911 UPS backup system. So we have a battery backup that comes on between, when, when the power goes off and before our generator turns on, or if our generator has problems, we've got that battery keeping us seamlessly able to operate our E911 system. It's time for that to be replaced, and in addition to the replacement, there's an ongoing operating cost that will also happen. So that's $205,000. The county paving program, the reason that is in yellow is because I did not fund everything they asked for. I just balanced it out trying to get close to 3 million because I felt that was, you know, the cap that we could go for. The elevator replacement and refurbishment, that is for Building One, and we do have use of our elevator by somebody who has to use the elevator. Weekly, that's going on, and sometimes more frequently, and so we are at risk, if we don't do that, of not having a person be able to get to the second floor. The roof replacement is one we toyed with a little bit. The, the Planning Commission evaluated, and it was a little bit lower score, the $65,000 spending, which is for a portion of the courthouse roof, and then the next year, a couple of years later, is the rest of it. When we met with the facilities maintenance department head, he mentioned that the jail, which is supposed to be FY27, is having more leaking problems and that he's had to repair. So initially, I moved it and flipped that. That's a $500,000 expense, and I flipped them, the '26 and '27. After I thought about it, looking at the funding that we had available, as well as the fact that we do have the ability to do a little bit of patching and repairing, and we're only talking a year, and that the Planning Commission had evaluated one roof, and they had, it has a little bit lower score, so I didn't want to be jumping ahead, and I just put it back in at the 65 and, and the order that they had, that facilities originally requested. The generator I've already mentioned is only if a grant comes in, it's 100% grant. The network overhaul and replacement, this is for our Wi-Fi and all the systems that go through, our switches and all the different hardware and systems in our buildings that I believe it was 2010 or 2011 that it was last done. Technology has changed so much, our demands. Nobody was using Wi-Fi hardly at all back then. We've had to bring in many different systems, just trying to keep Wi-Fi going in our own buildings where people are moving from office to office, or customers are coming in and, and needing that service. The ADA improvements as a continuation of projects, this would be for fields four through seven at Woodville. The Beaver Dam Dock and Bulkhead and Bridge Replacements, we have the Swan Bridge, which I believe is the longest or the second longest, but I think it might be the longest bridge. Again, it's done, and our building inspector has said, no use, other than pedestrians. We can't, if I'm not correct, I'm expecting Matt to come in and correct me or send y'all a note, because I think it's only restricted for equestrian use. But it's an existing facility that we allowed to just get in such bad shape that we've had to close it for what it was intended for. And the, along the shoreline of the lake, in front of the Wickham Lodge, all the way over to where the canoes are, thinks we have a terrible erosion problem that needs to be addressed, hopefully with like a living shoreline and something that would be attractive, but we're losing feet of areas. And you'll see that in the pictures, hopefully, as you look through these project supplements. So then, in, in the Bulkhead, when they did the parking lot and they got down into the bottom, they discovered that that whole Bulkhead is just got all kinds of rotten places. So all of this is a maintenance. I, I deleted three slides where I had divided our projects into maintenance, operations, and maintenance slash enhancements. And I was just, again, trying to make it shorter, but there is a theme here of maintaining what we have and needing to do a better job of that, so we don't let things go too far. Gloucester Point Beach Park renovations, there is cash in here by the county, but that is a 95% grant. And when you're doing a $2.5 million grant to stabilize the very much eroding, we have the least amount of shore area that we've had ever or in year, not, maybe, I can't say ever because who knows what was before us, but since I've been here. And we need to fix that. And so we need the breakwaters, we need that area planted and those dunes better established. We walk through the dunes to get down to the water instead of over top in a clearing for them. So this would fix that part of, and it's part of the overall master plan. The historic building preservation, this is an ongoing project by project, addressing the needs as the highest priority. And then the school bus replacement, and that is, even though it may be kind of hard to tell, that is the last line item. And what you don't see on here, which originally was on to Pago recommendations, when that long list is the HVAC. And the reason for is I pulled it out of Pago, it normally would be a Pago, but knowing we have at most 3 million to spend, and if we did the school bus replacement at 1.3 and 1.5 for the HVAC, for one year of HVAC, we have no other funds for these other projects that are very much needed. So it was time to get creative. So this totals up to just under $3 million. What does that mean that gets pushed back? The Hutchison House. As I've mentioned to the board, we're looking at including that in some studies, which is, will be good for us to have additional information. And this amount is for demo, but if there's any repurposing ideas or anything, we'll have a year to figure out what that would involve. The paving program, cut by 108,000. The window replacement postponed. The athletic field lighting, which this is specifically for pickleball court at Ark Park postponed. The playground equipment for Beaver Dam postponed. The casework replacement, these are these like 12-foot-long cabinets that every classroom has, that these things are original and they're worn out, water damage, all kinds of other damage, and they need to be replaced at two of the schools. And then the marquee signs that they requested too. So $993,000 pushed back, not addressed, and moving HVAC to a financing. The change that means in year, all the, year two, three, and four figures have a different total if this plan goes forward. They subtract out the HVAC because it's moved out. Year five did not have HVAC in it, and year two gets the 993 additional funds would be The only two financed recommendations to, well, three, if you count the HVAC. The two at the top are the software, the FEN+ and Community+ software at $2 million and Station One, and then the cost of four years all combined of HVAC.
How much?
Yes, sir.
On the software that we've got years ago, has that paid off?
Yes, except for that we always have operational costs that we continue to have to pay.
And how close to being, because I know it took a few years for it to get implemented, how close is it even to fully implemented now?
It is implemented, and I've got a couple of slides. The programs that we bought, because we only bought a couple of programs, and they are fully implemented.
Are we going to do a better job searching for the right software this time?
Well, I'll get into that in a minute, but yes, I think there, the, the group has a whole lot of experience of what we don't want to have happen, as well as looking at other localities and what they are using and the pros and cons on that. And they've been working on this for months, trying to make sure, because we have tried to work with the existing program, and they're just, we're so many versions behind, they don't do the kind of things that we do anymore, they've sort of gotten out of the business. And so we're, this is a crisis kind of level that it needs to be. This is just, it's got, to me, this is, the, the fire station, well, I can't say, I won't say the fire station capper, but schools, all the other services that this software provides, we won't, we will be like a California or Richmond if that software goes down. And then here's where I mentioned the differences between the scores and what's recommended. Now, the first white one that you have is casework replacement, it scored an eight. I put in the historic building, building preservation, it has its own funding, I'm sure that's not controversial at all. The generator, again, that's if we get the grant. The elevator scored lower, but I think that might be a situation where, you know, the, the Planning Commission may not be thinking that it's as important for people who are in that building, or maybe wait another year. We, we had so many issues with the courthouse and taking so long to get it replaced and it getting stuck, we don't want the same thing happening because we're just waiting till it breaks to fix it. And it has been inspected and recommended to be replaced. The Beaver Dam Dock and Bulkhead and Bridge Replacements, like I've already explained that thoroughly enough to understand why I would have that on the list, as well as the roof replacement. And these are just a few more notes. I think I again, covered everything on that, just the risk, if we, if we went with a different project, what our risk would be. Okay, here's, here's the information about the, the FEN+ and COM+ software. So this is used for finance, for purchasing, for planning and zoning, for environmental, for building inspections and utilities. We would not be able to process all of these, the monies, the permits, all of that, if that program goes down. We initially requested a replacement of this program in 2015, and it has been on the CIP list for nine years, with the exception of last year, when we asked for the, because we had Tyler being implemented. And there was a little bit of questionable about, we knew we didn't have the money, first of all, but there was this maybe false hope that something, you know, would work out and it would, you know, that, because we kept giving the company the benefit of the doubt. We've talked all the way up to the highest in that company, trying to get them to work with us, and it's not happened. The software that was put in before this Tyler software was what we replaced in the treasurer and the commissioner. And Questica is one that's just used for personnel budgeting, that is available with the Tyler program, so that would go away naturally by doing this other replacement. Why now, not next year or the year after? Because we are having extended and more frequent downtimes that they cannot explain. The lack of support, they have some retired person that they have to call back in, who's the only person who knows our system. The, the replacement is what we need for continuity of services for all these different things that I'm talking about, are, are critical functions of our county government. And it's important to know that while this is $2 million, which I'm showing being purchased over, over time, that in addition to that, there's a $500,000 subscription fee. I, I need to find out, and this is something Maria can help me with, what our subscription fee is currently to Central Square, and it's not anything, I don't think, close to that that we would save, but then pay another. So I'll find out what the net difference is in subscription fees. This project, along with any of the others, the feedback that we're looking for is, who do you want to hear from? Would you like any department heads to come in and explain this more? Would you like me to ask the fire reps, fire and rep, Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue reps to come down and speak to their project? So be thinking about that of, of anything that we can help you to understand better. And from the public, as well as you all, the website's on here, and they can just go to the finance and then go to the, the capital improvement plan and click on the FY26, and you can read the submissions and see the pictures and things for the different So here's the recommended funding strategy. The debt financing, 19 million, that is going to be a penny and a half cents of tax increase. We do not have the funds. Part of the reason, if anybody said, wait a minute, I thought you all said you could do it without a tax increase. We were talking 19 million. We were talking 11 or 12 million, plus we've spent a little, the first round of the savings we did spend, and we've committed that. So it's a penny and a half just to get these two projects. Then on the sales tax, we have, as I said, about $2 million in excess. My recommendation is not to spend one and a half million and just get body-tot. Go ahead and get all four years done at once and pay for it over time, and that way, we're keeping the money in the system, it's still earning interest, we'll still be hopefully accumulating more, we've been getting about We've been getting about $500,000 extra a year. I also want to be very clear that our sales tax is not hot like it was before. We are leveled off, as well as many other locations have. And so, the guarantee of having extra money is not there. So, this is a stated open risk that if we didn't collect the, the rest of the money that's needed 15 years from now, 10 years from now, whatever, as part of that whole loan system, that it would have to be paid for regardless. But we feel confident with the way things are going, that we can use these funds, help the school system right now, and they still can hopefully be saving additional funds that will be used for future projects. As we grow, and if there's more sales going on, then that sales tax will continue to grow. And then, the last is the, the 2.9 million of Pago, and that leaves us with a 16% fund balance. The board could look at, let's do more Pago. Let's get some of that $900,000 additional projects done, or do something completely different, you know, spend more money in a different way. But my recommendation is that you do not go below the 16%. We don't have any of those reserve funds. We don't have buckets like other localities have. When I talked to our neighbors, and they said they can handle a $2 million emergency without having to go back to the board, raise taxes, do anything, I don't know that we could handle 100,000. I mean, we'd have to really cut some serious things within our budget unless we used our fund balance. But if we're using our fund balance for capital, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot for the capital items that we need. And plus, that fund balance is a one-time each year. It's not a guarantee. It's all about how much we make over and above what we thought we were going to with our balanced budget. Here's the timeline, and I will be presenting this on February 4th. Between now and then, it would be so helpful for me to have feedback from the board. What you like, what you don't like. I can note things in the presentation of what I've heard of feedback to that point, so that the citizens, if they like it or don't like it, they can get back with you on those points, not just what, that I presented initially. So, the summary of the recommendations, you can see the Pago, and you can see the debt financed, and then, a reminder about the website. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, or again, starting that feedback process now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Steele. Any questions from the board members?
Ms. Callaway, when you get the information on the annual subscription fee, what, could you also get the EGTS, what the subscription is for that, or if there is one?
So, a clarifying point on that, EGTS is the software that is no longer. So, that was a one-time purchase that went unsupported and was replaced with Tyler. So, I can get you the Tyler and the Central Square, the two current softwares we have. Is that what you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, absolutely.
And then, with the, what, if the new software was purchased, everybody would be using the same software?
Yes, with the exception of Vision, which is in the real estate assessment office.
And that will work with that, integrate with that?
They already are having to do that because the, the Tyler and Vision are having to work together currently. That's what the treasurer is working with.
May I, Mr. Chair? We'll have to go out to bid for the software, right?
There, we've done quite a bit of research, and Tyler is on contract already because it is what almost every nearby locality uses.
This, this new software is from Tyler? The, the firm with whom we've had so much difficulty?
If I can speak to that, we have not, this is not a, obviously not a decision. We've done quite a bit of research. We, this is not a firm decision. This would be a recommendation based on a lot of research that we've done discussing with other localities. Ultimately, what we found is that Tyler, being implemented with the treasurer's office first, was against the recommendations of Tyler. They said, "You really need to implement finance first. That's how their software is done. Everything is based off the financials module." And that wasn't what we were doing at the time. We needed something to, to, to work in the treasurer's office and commissioner.
From where I sit in my Taj Mahal, or whatever it is, my palace, all I've heard is difficulties with Tyler. And I want to make sure this board doesn't have something forced down their throat like I think it was last time with Tyler.
Absolutely. All right, go for it.
I don't know if you've heard any of those complaints lately. One of the things that we have seen is that through this implementation, things have gotten better. Tyler's been very willing to do extra training and things, and we've learned, there's no perfect software. But I think if it turns out that this is the one we recommend, then the board should know it's the best we can get.
What did they do 20 years ago, 30 years ago, when they didn't have software? I mean, I just have a hard time understanding millions of dollars for something that someone can write down and take in without software. So, that's my, that's my.
Put that in an email, Ted.
And we don't need emails either.
We don't need emails.
But, so, we're looking at the same software that we have now, just an update?
For those two departments, yes. It would be purchasing the, more of that same program.
So, so, the softwares that we've implemented, you know, at the different times, we did different ones. The EGTS that went away, we, we did Tyler. The rest were called Penimation that we used with the schools. As they split up, it became Song Guard, now it's Central Square. That's the one we're using now, is called Central Square. The people that supported have retired. So, we're looking at what's available right now in the market. And Tyler is one of the leaders in Virginia. And the groups that use Tyler, because of some of the issues that Mr. Willmont has pointed out, we now have a users group that meets quarterly with Tyler to improve both our communications and the problems we have with the software. So, it's a lot better off. It may not be perfect, but it's better off than it was when we first implemented it.
But it's not two departments, it's all the departments?
Yes, sir. Well, like you said, it's, other than Vision, it's going to be HR, finance, purchasing, permits, zoning, environmental. The workflow for the people on the second floor that I work with all the time, it, this was such an improvement for them because you don't get lost between one, you know, you walk across the hall and something doesn't get picked up. This has workflow. All those things, they've, they've been reviewing with Tyler. IT's been working with every department to see if this meets their requirements. The commissioner and treasurer were already on it. So, you know, they're going to be part of this too, because once everybody else is on the software. And integrations, right now, AMI, all these others, Central Square will not integrate. So, if we want to try to make something move from one software to the other, we have to pull the data out, move it over, and then reinsert the data. Tyler has its integration, so the AMI will work. The data will move over. The Vision data moves over. So, this one, we see a lot less problems and it, you know, Ted's seen it at its worst. We haven't seen it at its best, but I'm feeling that it's, it's much better than what it was, but it may not be perfect. We'll wait as we implement it.
So, so, for the first five years, it'd be $900,000?
Yes, yes, that would be the debt and the operating, yes. Other localities would just pay the 2 million, and that would be a Pago, but that's not us.
That's not my question, so, but.
Yes.
If we do it and we finance it for the five years, it's going to be the 400 each year plus the 500?
Correct.
And then, after that, it's going to be 500?
Yeah.
And that will include any updates or whatever?
It's updates, it's the support. It, it, it's basically almost, you know, between 20 and 25% of your software costs are now what they charge you each year to keep the software up. And that's what they're doing, but we'll stay current this time. We'll have stuff, because it's in all departments, we won't have to worry about, is we update this one, it won't work in another department like we were in the past. The past, because all these different softwares, you had to debate when you would upgrade one because it would break everything you had connected to the next department.
And with Tyler, and I've seen this in other software.
Right.
If Henrico changes a module.
Right.
Does it go to everybody, or would we have to pay for that module upgrade ourselves?
That's what they're doing right now by meeting quarterly with Tyler. The group of users prioritize what things they want to see improved, and everybody gets that improvement.
So, who else uses Tyler?
Oh. Just out of curiosity.
So, right now, I know Williamsburg, James City County, York County, Newport News, pretty much all of the localities to the south of us. And then, also several localities that I've spoken with that are similar size to us in other not geographically close locations.
So, there are other programs that other communities are using that could meet our needs, or more expensive, or inappropriate, what? I mean, I know you've been looking at those, so, as Ted said, if this doesn't go out in a bid, then we're losing the opportunity to find out what else might be out there that could meet our needs?
We've actually done test runs on many of the other softwares already. We started, I mean, we've been looking at this for quite a bit. And if ultimately what we come back to is that we would essentially be on an island as the only ones on this software like we are right now, versus potentially being able to join a user group, we also would then be tied into integrations versus having the treasurer who inputs revenue and the financial department that manages the reconciliation on two different systems continually creates problems. And I have been very frank in my, our discussions with Tyler, just when we've started to look and demo these, these products, that I was there when we implemented Tyler for the treasurer's office. And it was not, it was anything but smooth. But from what I can gather, they've sent, they've explained that we, we implemented treasurer and commissioner first, and their software really was not set up to be done that way. So, we were pretty much a frontrunner. And if you, I pulled other localities, they all, except for Hopewell, who ran into a lot of the same problems that we did, they all implement financials first. So, at this point, they have explained to us that the product will work better because everything will integrate. However, we are not tied to this. This is a, you go out, you look at quotes, we've talked to lots of other localities. I have a whole spreadsheet of the ones that I've pulled on different softwares.
So, was it 500 or 2, $2 million just for the software regardless of the size of the locality?
That's the, no, it is not regardless of the size.
When there were also, I think, we did talk to Central Square about trying to move to their newest version, and the cost is almost identical. So, you want to go out and find the best product if even upgrading the old products don't cost you that much money. And I think that's what started this whole talk, was when IT came to me and said, "It's going to cost us almost $2 million to upgrade Central Square to their most current version." So, we had to go out and look to see what was available.
Well, and the current upgrade would not be an upgrade. It would be a full implementation of their new system. It would not, we would not just be able to transform what we have.
So, but the movement of data from one to the other would be seamless?
No.
Uh, no, implementation, I mean, we would do our best. They, they would transfer over three years of actual data, and we'd likely work off of, for anything that's past three years old, we would be, we would have spreadsheets for financials. Each department would, you know, we'd have a list of permits that would be exported. They would assist us with that. That's part of the $2 million upfront cost is to assist in those extrapolations of data.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Moving the discussion to a different topic, that being the fire station as opposed to the computer systems, which is very important, and thank you for your presentation. We've got some very tough decisions ahead of us. We have limited resources. We have very lean, it will likely be very lean budget. But I think what jumps out to me is, and this was touched on in Ms. Steele's comments, is the price of delay. And that when we, as a board, recognize a critical need for our community, we have to be decisive and we have to act, and we hopefully can gain the support of our community. And the biggest example of that is our number one capital need is the fire station on Main Street. And we, of course, support the brave men and women who volunteer at our fire stations, who take care of our families, who transport them to the hospital, and who save so many lives. And we absolutely want to support a fire station on Main Street. But what, the number that jumps out to me is, I remember our many discussions back in 2023, attempting to fund the fire station, and the cost of the fire station just two years ago was $12 million. And now, we are, two years later, and we are $5 million more, over $17 million for the same fire station. And so, this delay is, is costing a huge amount of money for our county. And I know that we will all work together to find a way to fund this. But I think that it's a lesson that we need to heed moving forward to act on these, because inevitably, the price of these projects are going to continue to go up and up and up. So, just a, a theme I think we should keep in mind as we continue our discussions.
Sure, following up on the discussion by Mr. Gibson, and recognizing the discussions that we had with regard to the fire station and the amount that was there. You know, we obviously had from Davenport, you know, quite a few spreadsheets that had different scenarios, of which some of the scenarios had contributions from the fire department, and also the Olivia's sale and all those things. Has that been factored into that 17 million?
Yes. It, it is in the amount that you see for the debt payment.
So, it might be worthwhile to revisit some of those scenarios so that we're better informed as to what this exactly is.
So, from a, and we can be happy to do that. We've been working with Davenport closely on this and utilities. A couple of things. One, just as another example that validates what Mr. Gibson just said. The fire department that Williamsburg built was about 14 million. They are building, and I don't know how far along they are, but, you know, I heard the, the prices. They're building a new police department that is almost identical. I mean, it's police needs versus fire, but it's the same kind of design. They wanted matching things. Three years later, whatever, it's 17 million. So, they're experiencing it too. And just by the natural, they, you know, pay for one, go to the other one. The other thing, and this may be something to discuss with, with the department. I know they have many needs that are beyond the building. You know, their different equipment, as well as their operations, the salaries that they pay the part-time people and things. The, the, one of the differences between what was done before, when we were looking at that 11, 12, it was a little bit different that there was another half million dollars in their contribution from the fire and rescue that is no longer being offered as part of the proposal. So, we asked them, "You create the proposal, you come to us." And they removed the sale of Olivia's from coming to the county, and they reduced the amount of the contribution from a million down. I believe it might have been based on a calculation like a percentage versus an actual hard dollar amount. And that's something to, just to further to say, you know, is there anything more you can do? But I think if volunteer fire and rescue pays more, somehow contributes more and lowers our debt on this, we're going to turn around and pay more for fire trucks and operations. We are, I think, 90 or 95% of their budget. How much of their budget, 90?
I don't really know.
We're the vast majority of their budget. So, if we take one, we're just going to have to give it back over here. And I think the original price that the architectural firm gave them was a number of years ago, and that was what we based our projection that we gave to Davenport. And we did take it up, because it was like 11 million, and we took it up. But that's why there is some difference there. And again, looking at those other comparisons, all the other projects, there's only, you know, it's not like we can say, "Well, this project's taking up part of that money." The only other thing on there is the 2 million. So, if you wanted to play around with things, it would be removing the 2 million or lowering the amount for the fire and rescue. And we've already maxed it out at a 30-year borrowing. I don't think you want to go to 35 years. So, any, anything specifically that you'd like us to run, we'll be more than happy to do. And we can do it without the software, so you can see what the I mean, we can do it without the software, so you can see what the difference would be there.
Any more questions? Just a couple, if I could. Mr. Steele, you mentioned something about the school sales tax.
Yes.
We want to make sure whatever we do is legal.
This is.
We don't want the same thing we had.
This is new spending, new projects, and we did double-check already to make sure that HVAC would qualify, and it does.
We did check with Mr. Wilmot.
Did not check with Mr. Wilmot, checked with the state folks, so it counts.
They were getting us in trouble the last time. So I want to make sure we don't get in trouble. You know, repeat history, all of that. Elevator in the court building, you said that was fixed?
Yes, it is fully functioning, certified, got its certificate and all, yes, it is working.
Good. The marquee signs at the schools. I've gotten a lot of people complaining about Paige Middle School's sign. One lady called and she said, looked like she was going into a correctional facility.
That is the one that doesn't have an existing sign, so.
It really has just a little public, like, sign.
It's a VDOT sign.
It's a VDOT sign, and they complain, and they really notice stuff like that.
I think that is the highest priority for the schools, is that sign, and I understand that. And again, these are where you might say, we need you to move this, or up that.
The other thing is, for the citizens that are listening tonight, they're hearing that the county doesn't have funds. You know, we're low. They're going to ask the question, why?
Every bit of inflation, for one, every bit of inflation that the citizens have faced, whether it's for salaries, whether it's for supplies, whether it's for construction, everything that's gone up, the vehicles we have to purchase, all of those things are just compounded when you look at, you know, the schools and the county and the amount of purchasing that we do. So it costs more to operate, and we, as similar said to the utilities, when you raise your expenses and you don't raise the revenue, it eventually catches up with you. And I know that it's hard to raise taxes, but many localities raise taxes routinely, a small amount. So it's not, it's just like a normal thing that they are keeping up with inflation. And Ms. Callaway was mentioning too, that some of them borrow every year because they have a borrowing program. So they start into debt every single year. There, there's not gaps like we have. So they may be doing less, but frequently. We wait and then have these big ones.
I think the other issue is salary discrepancies with groups across the river trying to compete because I know the utilities, the people I talk to, there is a big discrepancy. And because there's a dire need for utility people, you know, you can easily go across the river and work for a lot more. You know, we have a lot of dedicated people. We can't afford to lose anyone right now. And they are making far less, and it's obvious to them, they know that.
And, and as we discussed at the retreat and the information you've already been provided, that we're back to that 10%, you know, turnover rate. And the, you know, I propose that we look at a study that sees where we are and where we should be. And I know that, again, that's not popular with the public, but you can't have good things for nothing. And when I hear about, oh, we can cut the taxes, we can do this, I think that they are just wanting it to be that way. It's not the reality of our picture. I mean, we have infrastructure that is not in good shape. Even, you know, I totally agree with some of the comments that were made, you know, about utilities. Now, we did raise funds and provide capital funds with the AMI. So we had, and we've changed, we increased our fees this year for the equipment fee. But we didn't keep up with all, every time somebody was getting a raise or new equipment was cost, we didn't raise our rates because we didn't want to hurt our citizens. But in the end, if people don't have the quality service they want, it's going to affect us economically in many different ways. And so I wish I had better news. I mean, I think I sent a good weekly report with some good, you know, news on some grants and things, and I think we dig deep. And, and you do have a lot of dedicated employees who are working night and day to try to make things happen in the county.
With regard to utilities, I know when the issues in Richmond surfaced with regard to water supply, there were discussions, I understand, about providing money to utilities. Now, whether that was for Richmond or across the state, because I know that, you know, things I've read about utilities across the river that they have hull crews, that all they do is fix holes. And so our systems, while antiquated, are not that different from just about every, every, every community in the state and country. So was there any discussion of developing like an infrastructure program for utilities that could be used as grants, or is that just a pie in the sky thing?
There are no grants available. There are only loans, and as a, there are grants available for very small authorities, and if you fit into this particular mold, that's not us. So we can get low-interest loans, we can get low-interest loans anyway because of the government, you know. The one thing I want to know before Saturday that I haven't had a chance to look up is I heard on the news that in Richmond, they bid the piece of equipment that caused the flooding, the fact that it was broken, caused the flooding inside the water treatment plant, that they bid it three different times and did not purchase it. And I want to know what their reasoning was. It was, you know, it's that we don't want to do that kind of thing where we, we have been right there, where we said, we need to do this, and then we don't. We need to do this, and we only have part of the money. And I think they were facing the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Any more questions? Did you have a request for a public hearing?
Ms. Cronin, do I have a request for a public hearing? Yes, I do, for May, for May 4, I mean, May 4, February 4.
So moved.
Any questions, any more questions, discussion, all in favor? Poll the board. Poll the board. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orr. Sorry, Joe.
Supervisor discussion, any supervisor discussion?
Tony.
So you all probably didn't see it, but I promised some of my constituents I would talk about this. Twice a year, once in, once in January and once in about May, I take on some very colorful hairdos. And I was seen in the public and was chastised. So I'm going to tell you why that happens. I make a deal with my students, I'll make the deal tomorrow, make a deal with my students, that if they pass the certification test that is required in my class, they get to choose the hairstyle, the hair color, and I have to wear it for seven days. And a nice, where a district constituent told me what a shame it was for her supervisor to have a hairdo like that. So I'm going to have that hairdo, gentlemen. And sometimes I may even have it in this room. I cut it off on Friday because my time was up. But the reason I do that is because I found a way to motivate teenagers. And that's what I go to work for every day, to find a way to motivate teenagers. Mr. Smith can tell you that's not always easy to do. But they have a lot of enjoyment, they get a lot of enjoyment out of it, and they make a lot of fun of me, and that's fine because they have done what they needed to do. You need hallway cred when you're in a high school. And if you're going to tell a teenager you're going to do something, you need to do it. So if you see me with a crazy hairdo, Ms. Cronin saw me. If you see me with a crazy hairdo, I did it out of love and respect for my student body and I, my students, and I will continue to.
If you don't have pictures, it didn't happen.
Ah, there's pictures. There's pictures. Orange soccer ball, this time, starts. Orange soccer ball. But I promised this fine lady that I would come on here tonight and explain myself. So I've done my part, thank you, gentlemen.
So, so when do you normally do that?
January and May.
What part of January?
I just did it, I just did it last week.
So can we do board pictures next January?
Okay, is that all, Mr. Nikosia?
Yes, all, that's all.
I'm thinking about getting a toupee. Any more board discussion, anything else? That's it, only one thing left, no closed meeting?
So moved. Second.
My job? I'll go home.